We'll call this meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance and the invocation following.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them the wisdom to know and the courage to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen. Roll call, please.
Allen.
Here.
Green.
Here.
LaFleur.
Here.
Ms. Stravich.
Here.
Reindell.
Here.
Ricks.
Here.
Warren.
Here.
Good to see everybody here tonight. Approval of minutes for the city council meeting of September 3rd would be in order.
I'll make the motion.
Support.
Most been made and supported. Any discussion on the motion or the minutes? Be you not? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We have audience comments on any non-agenda items. At the time we get onto the agenda, I will, once council deliberates, I will go to the people for comments. Otherwise, Maurice, it looks like you're ready to jump here.
Ready again.
All right.
Same problem, same situation on Howard Street. The speed on Howard Street last year, come to a meeting, there was supposed to be some speed indicator. It was a table or whatever.
It's been ordered.
It's been ordered? Okay.
It has.
You know, I know you painted the curve at Grand Trunk, but people are still crossing over, and when they see the light, they still speed up to make it on Main Street. The solution to that, in my opinion, we just stop street, a three-way stop there, you know? And there's a lot of kids there now. If some kid gets killed, it's on you people.
Oh, it's gonna be on us. Not on the driver?
Well...
It's gonna be on us. That's a nice statement.
If you put a stop sign there, it's gonna slow them down, you know? But they don't pay attention, and there's a sign there that says, "Limited sight distance, slow down." They don't. They speed up to make the wait.
Mm-hmm.
So, something has to be done there. So, put that in back of your mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address their counsel on any non-agenda items? We will move on. Adoption of agenda, Mr. City Manager, any changes?
No changes.
City Council, any changes? Motion to accept the agenda as presented would be in order.
I'll make that motion.
Support.
Most been made and supported. Any discussion? Be you not? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Most been made and supported. There is no discussion on the consent agenda motion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We move on to items for consideration. We have fourteen of them this evening, and we will start off with the consideration of the presentation and approval of the fiscal year 2018-19 city audit. Mr. City Manager.
Council is scheduled to receive a presentation from the auditors, Plant Moran, on the fiscal year 2018-19 audit. Keith Shemansky, Dan Hart, and Dave Harrington are here to make that presentation. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and counsel. I'm Dave Harrington, partner on your account, and we're here tonight, as John mentioned, to present the financial results for the audit for June 30th, 2019. And I get the easy part, which is, again, giving you your opinion, which is the best you can get, which is unmodified opinion. The records were in excellent shape. And the other thing, I really, I've mentioned this the last few years, you've always been very responsive to any of our comments and look for ways for improvement. And the observation we'd, again, have this year is, so many communities are right once a year. Your internal accounting is so strong that it's right throughout the year. So, as you're getting your interim financial information, it's accurate, you can use it to make decisions, you can see whether your budget to actuals are there. So, you should feel great as you're planning for the future. So, with that, instead of going through the whole audit, which I know you'd all enjoy, we will do the slide presentation. So, Keith and Dan, I'll hand it off to you.
Thanks, Dave. So first, with the slides in front of you, first we'll start off with covering the general fund revenue. So, in total, general fund revenues rose again in 2019, up about five percent from 2018. Property taxes continues to be the largest revenue source at sixty-three percent, with state shared revenue being number two. Taxable values are continuing to head in the right direction, and we saw the third straight year increase this year. Also, state share revenue has been increasing at a modest pace, up about four percent from On the next slide for general fund expenditures, while revenues increased about five percent, expenditures increased about twenty-four percent, and that's primarily due to a transfer to the fire fund for the purchase of the new fire truck in the current year. Excluding that increase in the transfers out, expenditures mimicked revenues and increased about five percent. As is common, public safety continues to be the largest source of expenditures at forty On the next slide, we'll look at a comparison of the general fund fund balance. So, with the revenues and expenditures increasing, along with the transfers increasing, the city used fund balance of approximately four hundred and forty-two thousand in 2019. Nearly all of the remaining fund balance is classified as unassigned, which means that it is available for future use, any potential uses of the city. So, really what we want to point out here is credit to the city for keeping a close eye on the budget and maintaining a positive fund balance in challenging times, and this has allowed for future and also emergency expenditures like the fire truck in this current year. Budgeted use of fund balance for 2020, should it be necessary, is at a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. On the next slide, we'll focus on the water and sewer funds. The two primary measures that we look at would be working capital, which is your current assets, minus your current liabilities, and this is really a measure of resources available to fund operations. Next would be operating income, which summarizes the operating results for each year, and this is calculated using the user fees minus the cost of operations, and that does include the non-cash item depreciation expense. For the sewer fund, there was an operating loss in the current year, however, that factored in three hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars of depreciation expense, and working capital slightly decreased. For the water fund, there was opposite results. There was operating income and an increase in net working capital. The takeaway here should be that both funds are in a very strong financial position. The funds have been able to fund current operations without, in capital expenditures, without having to incur additional debt. And now I'll pass off to Keith to summarize our end of audit letter.
Good evening. If I could add just a little commentary on the financial results, while the general fund did use some fund balance during the year, that was a planned use of fund balance for the purchase of the fire truck, which is the type of fund balance uses that you want to see, rather than a surprise become, because expenditures came in greater than expected. So, Richmond general fund remains in a very strong financial position, which, as Dan mentioned, is a credit to management and the city council for keeping a close eye on the budget and only spending where appropriate. So, you should feel good about the financial position that you're in, and as I go into the letter addressed to the mayor and city council, you should feel about, feel very good about the controls and the financial reporting that you're receiving and that are taking place at the city. So, the most important part of this letter is what's not here, and that's any findings related to internal controls. So, as Dave alluded to in the past, we have had recommendations related to segregation of duties and some, a description of some adjustments that we identified as part of the audit. We had no such adjustments this year. So, a credit to Angel for doing a tremendous job, keeping the books and records very clean and made for an easy audit. Section two of this letter is essentially a follow-up to the letter we sent to council while we were planning for the audit to let you know about the execution of the audit. Due to the plain vanilla nature of this letter, it, again, tells you that it was a clean audit. So, you received an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, a clean audit report, and this letter tells you that it was very easy for us to get there. There weren't any difficulties with, in performing the audit, no disagreements with management, no significant findings that we need to bring to your attention. Finally, section two of the letter, some legislative and informational items, I'll allow you to look over. If there are any highlights to this section, I would say it's that there are some new reporting requirements for the TIFA, which I know John is familiar with and is working on complying with. And then we also describe some upcoming accounting pronouncements on the last couple pages. Gesbe eighty-four in particular is effective for next year. It's certain to have an impact on your financial statements and could potentially be some fairly significant changes coming. We've already put out some trainings and hosted online training for our clients related to this upcoming accounting pronouncement. We also have a very thorough toolkit that's soon to be released, and as soon as that is, we'll be sharing it with Angel, beginning a conversation on what changes do need to take place over the next year, and those will be reflected in next year's financial statements. But again, as I mentioned throughout this, city of Richmond should feel great about both their financial position and the financial reporting that's taking place. Any questions for us?
Counsel?
Nope. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Motion to accept the financial report from Plant Moran would be in order.
I make a motion, oh, I make a motion to receive and file the city of Richmond, June 30th, 2019, financial report with supplemental information from Plant Moran.
Support. Most been made and supported. Any discussion?
I would just like to thank council for having a vision for the future, and that is reflected in this report, and it's a privilege to work with a fantastic team of people who see the future of Richmond and plan for it. So, I appreciate that, and thank you, and thank you for the audience, and I thank Angel for the fantastic job you have done.
Anybody else? I just want to thank Dave again for helping us find Angel when we needed her treasure before he hired her. He didn't know she was, she was back on the market again. We got her a year earlier than she wanted to, but we do love Angel, and she does an outstanding job, along with the city manager and the rest of our administration. But again, thank you very much for looking through this for us. I know you spent a few weeks here in city hall going through everything, and we're very proud of what we have been doing for the last so many years. So, any other comments? Any audience comments on this item?
We're proud of you, too.
Thanks. Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Again, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Item number two is consideration of the second reading and adoption of ordinance number one six five, regulation of food trucks. Mr. City Manager.
Council is scheduled to give, consider giving second reading and adoption of ordinance one sixty-five, an ordinance regulating food trucks. Council discussed the food truck ordinance at their July quarterly roundtable meeting, and then I believe in August gave introduction and first reading to the ordinance. At that time, I did speak with three council members who had input. The second set of bullet points in your background brief were incorporated into the ordinance. Those changes were highlighted in yellow, and the draft ordinance is in your packet.
Thank you. Is there a motion before discussion?
I'll make a motion to give second reading and adopt ordinance one sixty-five, an ordinance to permit and regulate mobile food truck, or I'm sorry, mobile food vehicle vendors.
Support.
Most been made and supported. Discussion. State your name and your address for the record, please.
My name is Gary Locers. I live in Kimball Township, fifty-six fifty Willow Canyon Drive in Kimball, Michigan. I was asked by a member of the community to come and talk. I started my food truck in 2017. I put menus in front of all your desk. I've worked with Sam Moore from Croswell, James Freed from Port Huron, Randy Fernandez in Marysville, and they're all, they see no problem with it. I understand the kickback from restaurants and stuff, but we're not competing, we're bringing people to the area. I did about five weeks in St. Clair this year, and every customer that came down to get food, and the reason the city clerk, Annette Sturdy, had us come out was to get people to come down to the downtown area to see what they're doing, and every customer that came down all said the same thing. We never come down here for lunch. With all the food they have, they never come down there, and reason being, none of the restaurants are offering anything different. And I was only offering two to three items, and we were doing six, seven, eight hundred dollar days, you know, once a week. Right now, I'm working on a food truck association where we move into a certain area, like I'm looking at possibly doing something with SC four, Croswell, the Marysville Golf Course, and possibly right by the bridge in Port Huron. Once a month, maybe we'll go here and there, but really bringing people to the community. I mean, Richmond, for example, has a beautiful, I mean, everything in Richmond's nice, and when you bring people from out of county, they're gonna come here and see what you have, and they're gonna want to maybe buy homes, or just spend their money in another county or another town. So, I, I think it's a great thing, and again, I understand the restaurants' kickback, but I think it's an example of how they can be challenged to want to step their game up. I mean, if people aren't coming to your restaurant, it's because you're serving the same items. I mean, I've seen restaurants, they do specials, right? And some of the specials they do, they just take an item off the menu and mark it down two bucks. That's not a special. I mean, if you got six items on the menu that are composed of chicken, every day of the week, take that chicken, go on Pinterest and serve something different. It doesn't take a lot. I mean, that's what gets people coming out to food trucks, because they're doing different off-the-wall things. My menu's very unconventional. It's stuff I just thought of and created, and people enjoy it. When I started off, I didn't know what people would think, and I come up with stuff all the time, just to, it's something, I worked at the paper mill for thirteen years, and this was my little side project to be done with a job and be self-employed. I quit my job this year, and now I'm self-employed. So, that's what I wanted to come out and say, just consider it, and maybe, I know, October ninth, down in Royal Oak, they have their monthly food truck rally. It's the second Wednesday of the month. Head out there and see the thousands of people that come out there for a monthly event, and they come from all over this area. So, appreciate your time. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak? Susan, would you, for the record, give your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Susan Eisenhardt. I was getting to that. My name is Susan Eisenhardt, and I am the newly elected director of the Richmond area Chamber of Commerce. I'm also a very concerned citizen of the Richmond community. My husband, Bob, and I have a lot invested in this community. We've been here for a long time. Thank you for accepting me tonight to speak to all of you. I'm here on behalf of approximately thirty brick and mortar food establishments that have chosen to do business in Richmond, most of them for quite some time. I don't think I have to tell any of you how hard these owners work, how hard the employees work to make their food establishments stand out. They serve the best food that they possibly can. I believe they do change their menus around. They come in early, they go home late, they have sore backs, sore feet, maybe a few tips to take with them, and a few leftovers. It's hard work. The owners pay taxes, the owners pay their employees, they pay rent, and they pay mortgages, unless they are lucky enough to have their building paid for, and that's a beautiful day when that happens. The employees, the employees plan on the owners to make the right choices, to pay the taxes, to make sure the health department is happy, to pay the vendors, to pay the rent, to pay insurance when it's possible, so that the employees can take a paycheck home to support their families. Every day for a business owner is about pride, it's about prayers, and it's about people. One bad day can tip the scale one day or the other for the day's proceeds. Businesses understand fairness and equality when they are all on the same terms and on the same page. I do think food trucks can be a nice addition to a city, but in larger cities and more populated areas such as Detroit or Mount Clem, and yes, Port Huron, St. Clair, in the size of Richmond, already claiming approximately thirty food establishments, I just don't understand it. I had to ask myself, are food trucks an improvement to the city? Will the trucks help bring customers to Richmond? Will they bring customers to the established businesses in Richmond? Will their trucks be the theme that Richmond displays? I am sure that I could not answer yes to all those questions. If you will, I want you to think in terms of a flea market vendor selling half-off sunglasses and perfume, moving in next to you or down the street from you, the established retail store, and you've been selling there for many, many years in the same place. Your inventory is large, and your sales depend on the perfume and the sunglasses that you have in that store. What would this do to your bottom line? I can tell you from experience, it can ruin you. I'm going to share with all of you one of the most trying times in my life, and how, and I know that my husband's, Bob's, life too. This is one of those times in a business person's life that the public thinks your choices are geared right at them, that I did something personally to them, and believe me, it's really hard to explain when people stop you in the streets or in restaurants or any other place. I didn't come out of my house for a while. Of some of you, as some of you may know, I owned Susan's Hallmark Gold Crown Store in Richmond for twenty-plus years. I loved my store and really tried to offer products that my customers loved, loved for themselves, and loved to give others, including Hallmark cards. I gave all to my Hallmark stores. Four of my kids worked in the stores and went on to college and degrees. I employed so many wonderful young women and gentlemen, mainly from the Richmond area, but also from Memphis, from Romeo, from St. Clair, from Armada, Lenox, Richmond Township, Columbus Township, New Haven, and the list goes on. Bob and I took the store for, over, that, when we took it over, had Ace Hardware Goods in the store. They were selling drugs behind the dumpster, and I turned it, we turned it to one of Hallmark's prime locations in Michigan. I served on many committees for Hallmark, traveling from Kansas City, Missouri, the home of Hallmark cards, and I served on buying committees and forums. Susan's Hallmark Gold Crown Store was also videoed for a Hallmark commercial, which was one of my greatest achievements. Hallmark people from Kansas City actually flew into Richmond, Michigan, to make the video. The awards and the honors went on for many years, and then until the day I received a phone call from my husband, Bob. I still remember his words. Honey, did you know that CVS is now selling Hallmark cards? I said to him, "This is a joke, right, Bob?" Because he's always saying something goofy to me. Nope, the Hallmark sign is hanging, no. I said, "Is this a joke?" He said, "No, the Hallmark sign is hanging in the window." I thought to myself, "No way Hallmark would have told me if they were going to do that." At the time, CVS was right next door to my store. I drove to the store, I saw the sign, and I was devastated. On Monday, I called Hallmark. They basically told me to live with it. The world was changing, and this was one of those changes. The next thing I knew, Hallmark cards were in the Kroger store, right next to CVS, two doors down from me. I pretty much knew I was finished. My store had been a destination store. Now people could buy cards in places that they had to go to, like grocery stores and pharmacies. What mom would want to stop at two different places when she could just go in and do her shopping in one place? Why would she want to drag her kids into my destination store anymore if she didn't have to? Do you know what my rent was and how many cards I had to sell to cover that rent? The rent was approximately five grand a month in the city of Richmond. Competition is good, but not always good if it's not followed and used commons, I'm sorry, common sense has to take over. The presence of the cards in other stores pretty much finished me. You could sit and watch my customer count go down, one by one, and I kept track of my customer count. After a long struggle, Bob brought me back to reality. As hard as I was working to save my store, it was not working. Bob reminded me that you cannot use your personal savings to hang on to a business. After the first five years, it has to survive on its own. My decision was made that evening, and I decided to close my Hallmark store. What I went through the weeks after my closing, only Bob understands. Those are the days I don't want to remember again. All I am saying to all of you is be careful. With twenty to thirty empty buildings already in the city of Michigan, are you willing to take the chance of one more? Honor these people that are in your town and take care of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address counsel?
Anthony Maniscalco, three five four nine eight Pier Street. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I'm here to kind of echo some of the sentiments that Susan said as well, but also offer a different and maybe a unique perspective. I was a resident of Macomb Township, and I moved up here with my wife, and we had our child in Richmond in 2006. And I live in Macomb Township. I grew up in Macomb Township, and I'm sure most of you are familiar with how large that township is, the hustle and bustle of it. One of the reasons that I moved up to Richmond is to get away from all of that. Now, I don't mean to be rude, but living on top of my two next-door neighbors was not very fun. Richmond is a small town. This is a welcoming town. This is a town where friends are neighbors, and they become family. I can go to any of my neighbors' homes right now, walk right in their homes, and they're gonna offer me a beverage, food, good conversation. That's why I live here. So, part of our community are those brick and mortar businesses that have a very difficult time surviving. When I can go to a diner in the city of Richmond and be welcomed, like I'm a member of the owner's family with a kiss and a hug and gratitude for just showing up, that is an amazing thing. That is something you don't get in a big community like Macomb Township where I'm from. Now, the business aspect, I want to say, is that these business owners put their blood, sweat, and tears into their businesses with the extreme chance of failure, and as Susan correctly pointed out, we have many vacant buildings in our town that could be restaurants. So, if you wanted to open a Mexican place or an Italian place, for instance, you could do that. You could make the investment in the brick and mortar. You could pay the rent. You could hire employees. You can pass health codes, have to go through the health department. You have to pay city taxes. You have to pay payroll taxes. There's so much that goes into investing into a business, and for people to bring in food trucks into our community that have nothing- And for people to bring in food trucks into our community that have nothing invested in this community other than trying to make a quick buck and going back off to wherever they came from, that doesn't sit well with me. The business owners of this community are our friends, family, and neighbors. They are invested in our community. They are the first people that will offer donations to booster clubs in Richmond schools, for instance. Churches, when churches have functions, they are the first ones to pony up, whether it's food at a serious discount or free. You know, we had, I'm a member of the Knights of Columbus and we had spaghetti dinner and Ken's Country Kitchen donated everything because one of our brothers had cancer. Sorry, folks, but you're not getting that from a food truck. So I urge you to really strongly consider this decision and the impact that it will have on our friends and our neighbors that works so hard and have so much invested in this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm in Warhede Breeze. I live at Howard Street. I don't know if you remember, years ago, my mother and dad had a pizza place up in Thirty-two and Main Street. And unfortunately, it folded up, you know, because there was other places around there too. And like I said, and the food trucks, I don't know, like the Armada Fair or the good old days, they charge you eight, nine dollars for Polish sausage and zero, four bucks for a hot dog. And that's a little out of range for what I think, you know, for what they should do. So I think they should regulate it really close, whether it be the price or the amount of time that they spend here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name is Melissa Matrazak. I live at six, nine, two, six, eight, North Main Street. I also own a brick-and-mortar business within the city. I don't serve food there. I have antiques and some other home decor items. My business is based on who we can bring in from outside of this community. I won't survive if I count on Richmond residents buying from me every day. I do believe wholeheartedly that there is a place for these trucks. I think that it's not taking away. We had somebody in during good old days that said, "If I would have known we were going to go just over there and eat off a truck and then walk back, I would have went to a restaurant and sat down." They pull in a whole different type of clientele, the same as the brewery is not taking business away from Chaps or the pub. It's a different clientele. But they are going to bring people in that the rest of us businesses need to survive. We count on people from outside our community coming and finding our beautiful town and spending time here and spending their money here. Unfortunately, we don't get enough business from within our city limits. We have a lot of people right in this town that don't shop local, whether it's big or small. So we need that business. And I think food trucks enhance that business. I'm not saying every day, but I would love to have the opportunity that if I wanted to do some kind of a market or have a day, that I can have food at that event to get people into my store, to get people to the other stores around me and shop in our town. I think the clientele that they bring in with them is something that our town needs to continue to move forward. I don't think it's going to step us back. It's just a different type of clientele. So when you're making this decision, I would hope you would think about those kinds of things too. As somebody who supports our local restaurants very regularly, we're lucky. We've got good food in this town. I think food trucks are only going to enhance that. They're going to make money off of those people that come and they might get something small, but then stay for a couple hours and shop and hit a restaurant for dinner or after, or hit the pub, or hit the brewery. It helps us all. So please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? If not, we'll bring you back to the table. Any further discussion, counsel?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I think everybody agrees that the ultimate goal is to have brick-and-mortar for restaurants. We do have space available. I'm familiar with some other communities that I go to that have had food trucks. And due to good business, good food, they were able to then build enough equity so that they could actually open up restaurants. There's two in one town that I know that opened up. And actually, what they do is they still have the food truck as well, so it's a little bit of overkill, but they're able to survive. So, I mean, it'd be great if somebody had the equity to just jump right in and as our current restaurants have had to do. But as mentioned in a lot of the background information, some things have changed. And the way I look at it is hopefully it would bring a brick-and-mortar restaurant, but allowing somebody to get to that point. The applicant that we have and approved to have a food truck is a local tax-paying resident. Granted, it's a house and they're paying property taxes, so they aren't paying taxes on there. So one of my suggestions as we went through that was to make sure that our fee schedule is correct. Maybe we need to charge more for allowing to have the food truck to offset some of that cost. Obviously, it won't equal what the property taxes would be. But and again, this is a, we can always, as city council, we can always change it if we realize somebody's abusing it. Appreciate the administration for going through and putting together a very detailed ordinance on that that hopefully weeds out those situations where people would be attempting to abuse it. As of right now, I said, we just have one applicant that is a local resident, tax-paying resident. And I look at it too, is with the hours that they have until nine o'clock. Some of our brick-and-mortar restaurants don't stay open until nine o'clock other than, say, your Hamlin Pub, which just came into town, some of those. So there, I think during those hours, there would be potential for increased business. One thing that I wasn't supportive originally was to, and I don't know if we can just limit it to private property, but that would be the preference. But I think we went through and designated three areas that make sense for it, to give it a try. Because we can always make changes. We can always say, "Yep, it's not working here. We need to, need to look at this again." So I appreciate all the comments we got. I also am looking at getting new business and ultimately get a brick-and-mortar. But I think this may be a stepping stone for this particular applicant. Now, we can't base our ordinance just on one applicant. Or maybe we can add a caveat that they have to be residents of the city. I don't know. But those are just some of my initial thoughts on the good parts of it, realizing that there are potentially temporary unfair advantage of getting started.
Is that it, Mike?
Yep.
Anybody else?
Yes, I'd like to speak, Mr. Mayor. I just want to bring back to why we originally focused on this. We have a resident, one resident who applied to this, who the goal of her food truck is to train her autistic son. We have not had any other applicants since then. Our ordinance has written that there are only three total per season. That's it. So it's just three food trucks in this ordinance. And again, government interference in the economy. When Alexander the Great visited philosopher Diogenes and asked whether he could do anything, Diogenes replied, "Yes, stand a little less between me and the sun." And again, that government stays out of the way of the free-market system. Being on the EDC, we do everything that we can to bring business into town. This offers something of a variety, a unique once-in-a-while opportunity. I am a loyal visitor of, I'm frequenter of our restaurants in town. And we have, they all have a lot of loyal followers that are not going to jump ship and go to a taco truck all the time. So I would ask that our limited, very limited ordinance that we have be approved. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I got a question. If in case this does pass while we vote, this particular ordinance is only good till October 31st of this year. Correct. As is written in the ordinance. The permit's only good for, the permit's only good till next, end of next month. At that time, do we revisit that? Or is there opportunity to between November 1st and April 14th of next year?
You can always go back and look at any ordinance at any time.
Correct.
But there's also a cost involved with that in first and second readings. Am I correct? If we amend an ordinance, we have to have first and second readings, go through the entire process again.
It's unfortunate we're so late in the season on this, the way the ordinance is read, to have these discussions with the people here tonight and to deal with something that's only going to be here for another, you know, forty-five days before it expires for the season.
Anything else?
Just to point a clarification on Counselor Rindell's comments. Yeah, the season is only forty-five days, but the actual ordinance doesn't expire. It's just, it's, it's...
Right. But in the ordinance, that food truck season expires.
Yes, correct. Right.
Okay. I've been on record saying I'm against the food trucks as presented in the ordinance. And I still am. You know, I've run good old days for years. And, you know, I have food vendors every year. It's a special event. It's in an area off of Main Street and away from restaurants. And it is something that is the normal operation for a festival of our size to have, is midway with food. We went from roughly three or four carnival-owned food trucks and got nothing but complaints about not having enough different types of food. So when our contract was up six years ago, we decided that we were not going to allow that in the contract with the carnival and we were going to open it up. And we now have fifteen, we limit it to fifteen food vendors. So there is a need, there's no doubt about it, for special events. What I, I'm still going to vote against this as it's been presented, but I would not hesitate to continue a discussion on a possible ordinance we already have in place, which is the, what is it, the Hockers and Venders?
Yeah, Hocker Peddler.
Yeah. Possibly we could add on to that, revisit that for special events. But to have somebody who is in place three days a week, which is the high time, the Friday, Saturday, Sunday, that's the big time for our restaurants. I just can't see that happening for so many reasons. I don't need to go back through it again. So anyhow, if this does go down, then I would, I would ask that we put that out in our October workshop to start or continue a discussion on the feasibility of having food vendors of whatever types, whether it's in a truck or it's in a trailer or whatever it may be. Health department now allows a tent. You don't have to have a truck or a vending unit as such. So that's where I'm at. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay?
Nay.
Nay's habit. Motion fails. Is there any other motion that anyone cares to make before any further discussion? Do we have consensus that we'd like to further this discussion at our next workshop in October?
Yes.
I do have a question. So we did approve one before we even had these conversations. That still stands.
Yeah, this does not negate that. I think we have a consensus, Mr. City Manager, would like to see further the discussion in October. Moving on, item number three, consideration of special event request, Christmas events. Mr. City Manager?
City Council is scheduled to consider approving a change to the Santa Parade and tree lighting along with a special event request from Maniachi's to hold a Christmas Kringle Market along the edge of their building during the Christmas tree lighting. As many of you know, our existing Santa Parade goes from the TSC Plaza up to Churchill, goes around the block and then back to the Odd. Due to the length of it, it's a non-walking parade and we don't shut Main Street down due to the detour being so extensive that it would cause people to go out into country roads that aren't well-lit in the dark for a number of reasons. Over the years, we've all talked about how that limits our participation in the Santa Parade. And we've had discussions this year with the committee to look at having our Santa Parade start at South Forest on Main Street and go to Park Street with the tree lighting being moved from the Odd to the Banquet Center Pocket Park there on Main Street. As mentioned, the tree at the Odd is getting much too large and kind of out of shape for, to be a Christmas tree. And so for a number of reasons, we're recommending that we move that. It would still be a non-walking parade, but the parade organizers believe they'd get much better participation if they don't allow traffic and actually shut the street down during the parade. And again, we're looking at moving it from the first Friday of December to the first Saturday. So that's the first item, our first motion on this item. The second is in conjunction with moving the tree lighting to the Banquet Hall. The Banquet Hall is allowing us to use the inside of the hall for the photos with Santa. And they're requesting a special event for a small tent along the side of their building for a Christmas Kringle Market.
Thank you. Is there a motion before discussion?
I make the motion to approve the new Santa Parade route along Main Street from Forest to Park Street on Saturday, December 7th, 2019, 6:00 p.m., with the tree lighting to be held at the Pocket Park on Main Street. And now the city clerk to play him that for the road closure.
Support.
Most of them made and support. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I think this is really great. A lot of, a lot of work was put into it, so I appreciate everybody that worked on it. I really like it. I think this is a real good change to it. I think we will have more participation.
There's been quite a few complaints about, you know, the two-way traffic and having younger people in the parade and they want to be in the parade. So, you know, that was heavily considered by the ladies that are running the parade now. So it does, it does shorten the parade, but I believe you'll have a lot more.
And if you wish, right now, all of the, almost eighty, ninety percent of the audience or spectators are all at the tree lighting. They're not along that long parade route with the exclusion of maybe a couple pockets of...
You know, the thing that came out of that was closing Main Street between Monroe and Water in front of the park there, the Pocket Park, Maniachi's there, for an hour. So that everybody's not crowded into one little area. And if you've looked at some of the old pictures, some of the old parade and gatherings were on Main Street. And so hopefully some of the shops are open and the restaurants are ready to go on that evening.
And I think, Mr. Mayor, that was the vision of the committee, was to have this Hallmark moment in that historic downtown area that we can celebrate the coming of the season, have the shops open, have the Christmas cash, have activities, and just the whole night be a buzz.
I also think the lineup is easier down on Forest. You got the elementary school. You have the ease of people wanting to go down there and be part of the parade. They can be downtown. It's just, they can walk from the start to the finish.
Yeah. Yeah, the ladies that are in charge of this also were the ones who were responsible for a lot of the, can we change the grand parade and start it or end it where it's ended now, which has worked out beautiful for us for two years in a row. And they hate to be branded as people that come in, but they're my daughters and they've been around good old days since the day they were born. So, but I, they're, they're very into this. And also, the one is a teacher at the middle school and has gotten quite a bit of response from people that we'll see a lot more going on there. And that's what it's all about, trying to get as many people involved as we can in the, in the event. Anything else? Any audience participation on this item?
Melissa Matzak again. I just wanted to let you guys know that I am involved with Shop Richmond, who also kinda helps out with everything at the shopping end of this Christmas event. And last year was awesome, hoping to build on that this year and make it even better. We had a great turnout at the tree. And I think part of that was because as shops, we actually went to each other and said, let's stay open, let's really make this an event. We did hot cocoa, we did some fun things. And I really think the addition of the Kris Kringle Market will bring even more people to town again. Not necessarily, you know, losing business for me, but bringing people to town to do something different. So, we've gotta look at this as one big picture. And I think this Christmas event could really put us on the map for that holiday season like so many other small towns are trying to do. So, I'm really excited about this event. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Back to the table? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We need another motion to accept the special event application from the Banquet Center.
I make a motion to approve the special event application from Maniachi's Banquet Center to use the parking spaces that run parallel to the banquet hall for a Kris Kringle Market from two to eight P.M. on Saturday, December seventh, two thousand nineteen. Support.
Most of them made and supported. Any discussion?
Just one comment, sir, that, again, I'm very happy that Melissa commented 'cause this is indirect competition with her business, but she supports it.
Any other comments?
I have a question. The vendor spots, who's, is Maniachi's in charge of it?
Maniachi's is in charge. According to her special event application, she would be in charge of that portion.
Are they selling vendor spots and they're keeping those proceeds? Or is that going back to?
Well, the proceeds, the proceeds from selling those spots, vendor spots, would go to the banquet hall.
Okay.
But, you know, obviously the vendors that are there selling crafts, Christmas crafts and stuff.
It all going back into?
They're working with us, they're helping to decorate the Pocket Park. They're allowing us to plug into their electric for the tree, those sorts of things, so.
But yes, you are correct. Just like the spring and summer.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I just, I just want it on record so we knew where that money is all going back into the, the whole big pot of it.
No, it's not. It's going to the business owner that puts it on.
Well, as he said, then they're also in turn paying back into-
They're letting us use their electricity.
Yeah.
And we're, we're renting the hall that night from them.
Okay.
Anything else?
No, I'm good.
Audience participation? Any comments? Back to the table? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number four, consideration of special event request, Chamber of Commerce scarecrow decorations. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider approving a request from the Richmond Area Chamber of Commerce for their fall decorating scarecrow event. The Chamber Director Susan Eisenhardt submitted the request to council for the utilization of the light poles from approximately Park Street down to Grashett Avenue along Main. And will later this month be going to Tifa for their consideration on helping with funding of the straw bales.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the request from the Richmond Area Chamber of Commerce for fall decorating with the placement of scarecrows, straw bales and cornstalks at Main Street light poles from Park Street to Grashett Avenue from Tuesday, October first, two thousand nineteen, to November third, two thousand nineteen.
Support.
Most of them made and supported. Any discussion? Susan, did you wanna address anything on this?
I don't know what to say. I think it's a wonderful thing. And I want this to happen and, um. I'm, I'm trying to play catch-up now with the Chamber of Commerce. So this is one of the first things that we've started to do and I appreciate, I just appreciate everybody pulling together. What I wanna see more of is the north end and the south end as they talk about. I don't want that split anymore. I'll be working towards this all the time. So, I think it'll be a good thing and I thank you very much. And hopefully I've got a place to put all the bales and have done all my work on that. Okay, thank you.
John, clarification on the back, contest rules under general. And the last sentence starts with all scarecrows must be removed starting November third. Is that supposed to be ending November third, or must be removed by November third? Or is it actually?
Uh, let me, uh, should be by November third.
Okay. That's what I thought.
Not starting.
Historically, we had some problems with the scarecrows out there and, you know, decapitated and everything else for a month, you know? So we kinda wanna date when they, they gotta go, they gotta go. But it's a great, great event. Very good. Really gets things going in town. Is that what those are? I wasn't sure because they all look the same. I'm just saying they, they all look the same. I wasn't sure if, if that's what it was, or are they dummies that they're going to dress?
They're, they're done.
And I would like to speak to that because it goes with the Good Old Days Children's Parade theme this year, which was I Love Richmond. So I really appreciate that the Chamber is continuing this awesome event and continuing on with the theme that Good Old Days had this year as well.
Anybody else? Any comments? Back to the table? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We have number five, consideration of special event request from the Richmond Area Historical Society Cemetery Walk. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider a request from RAGS to conduct a living history cemetery walk in the City of Richmond Cemetery on Saturday, October twelfth, from one P.M. to three P.M. The placement of a cross-the-road banner promoting the event from October second, two thousand nineteen, to Monday, October thirteenth, and the use of the chapel during, during their walk.
Very good. Mary Ellen, did you wanna address the council on this at all? It's up to you.
Mary Ellen Shepherd Logan, representing the Richmond Area Historical and Genealogical Society. Having said all those names, my time is probably up. But we would like to do the cemetery walk again this year. It's been relatively successful for the last two years. It's a fun event and it talks about the history of some of the pioneers and also some of the more recent residents of Richmond who lived in the area, had an impact in the town or the area of the town, or were just normal people living a life and what that life was like. So, I appreciate the help from the city every year. And we continue to have a great relationship, I think, and it's, it's a nice event. So thank you.
Thank you. Fair motion?
I make the motion to approve the request from the R.A.H.G.S. to conduct a cemetery walk in the City of Richmond Cemetery on Saturday, October twelfth, two thousand nineteen, from one P.M. to three P.M. And the use of the chapel for registration. And direct the city clerk to apply to M.D.A. for the placement of a cross-the-road banner on October second, two thousand nineteen, through Monday, October thirteenth, two thousand nineteen.
Support.
Most of them made and supported. Any discussion?
Just one question. There, there's a request for the portable restrooms, but isn't there one already there?
I don't believe there is. There's not a, is that something that we?
I know we had one for, um.
It was there for Memorial Day?
We had one for the parade.
Just for the parade.
Okay. It's not there permanently? Okay. I'm trying. We are.
Mary Ellen, are you requesting the city provide the portable restroom that you have checked off? I'm not sure. We're not negotiating.
I would support that motion.
Bring it up at the Tifa meeting. We don't, we don't do portable restrooms here.
We can, can't we?
Okay.
Oh, okay.
I do wanna say in the letter, though, to my daughter, you're very disappointed. Lola B. is not going to be represented.
I see that, yeah.
She was supposed to be there.
Yeah.
And I was going to be Lola.
Couldn't find anybody that could. I was gonna say, nobody can speak Latin.
I speak Latin.
Did that answer your question?
I, I speak Latin.
I didn't know there was a week that wasn't there, but she is not there.
Okay. Any other discussion on the motion? Any other comments from the audience? Back to the table? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Good luck. Item number six, consideration of banner request, Michigan Dressers. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider a banner request for a small, approximately three-by-six banner promoting the Richmond Moose Lodge and Michigan Dressers Motorcycle Club Thirty-Second Annual Toy Run for kids on Grand Trunk between Maine and Howard on October sixth. As you can see from the photos, they have a banner and would like to place it at the end of Grand Trunk. I've kinda done a little bit of a mock-up of where it could go and I'll work with them to make sure it gets placed in the right position.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the request for a small banner promoting the Richmond Moose Lodge and Michigan Dressers Motorcycle Club Thirty-Second Annual Toy Run for kids to be placed at the grass area near Grand Trunk, M-19, beginning September twentieth, two thousand nineteen.
Support.
Most of them made and supported. Is there any discussion?
They were here our last meeting, it was a very nice presentation. Things they're doing for, at any kids in the community is just incredible.
Any audience comments? Back to the table? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number seven is consideration of Richmond Community Schools Bond Millage Proposal. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider discussing the Richmond Community Schools bond issue that will be on the ballot on Tuesday, November fifth, two thousand nineteen. In front of you tonight at the table is a resolution supporting people's participation in the election.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
Is there, there was not a prepared motion here?
Correct.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to accept Resolution Number twenty-nine dash eighteen, a resolution encouraging participation in the Tuesday, November fifth, twenty nineteen, election.
Support.
Most of them made and supported. Discussion? At the last meeting when we had presentations by the certain members of the Board of Education and others, I had to ask council if, I didn't ask council, I requested that this was at the agenda for this meeting. We have since found out that in two thousand sixteen, the state decided that through a public act, they expanded that act to include all public bodies are not allowed to express a yea or a nay. I was not aware of that at the time, I'm sorry, that I expressed, what I expressed at that time about the bond. I will do that personally for on, for on now. And I won't speak to why, in God's name, a public body like ours who is not running this bond, and it is so important, why they changed that law? It amazes me. It's, they've taken away anything that, you know, and it just, it, they continue to erode the, the smaller bodies underneath them as far as jurisdiction goes. Anyhow, we have a motion and I hope that council can support, that people get out and participate in the election for the school bond on November fifth. Any other comments?
Yeah, can we add that, we love Richmond?
Yeah.
There you go.
Yeah, and being, on behalf that we can't do anything like that, I appreciate the efforts on the schools' part in getting the word out to educate on the bond and to get out and vote. They're doing a, they're a great job with it and they're gonna keep doing a great job until that November vote comes along. So if there's, anybody has any questions, go to one of the meetings and, and learn about it and, and find a way to go out and vote in November.
Anything else?
Just, oh, just a reminder that there is no reason, you don't need an excuse to file for absentee, so there should be, everybody should vote.
And if you are able to go to one of the meetings, I was able to go to the meeting Sunday and the presentation was fabulous. You're able to walk the schools. They have everything marked what they're doing. It's very well-informed. If you have any questions, they'll answer them right on the spot. So there shouldn't be any reason why somebody doesn't understand something. They can get those answered right online, even if you go online. And it'll explain your tax increases, everything. There's examples of everything there.
I think, you know, you bring up the tax. I think what, another interesting fact is, it was in our, I believe it was in our packet, the city manager had put together, yeah, it's on the back of our thing. The city manager had put the list of all public schools in Macomb County and where we're at today in the millage rate for Homestead at Don Homestead. And I can tell you that we are second from the bottom of all schools today. And if the bond were to pass, we would be, I believe, the fifth from the bottom. And I haven't counted how many schools, but I believe there's well over twenty schools, public schools listed in, in Macomb County. I actually think it's somewhere around twenty-four.
Correct. That's for cities and villages, non-Homestead tax rate, total tax rate, correct.
If you want that information, I'm sure that Macomb County will share that with you on their website. Any other comments or discussion on this? Any from the public? Back to the table? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number eight is consideration of Resolution Number twenty-nineteen dash seventeen, State Trunk Line Maintenance Contract. Mr. City Manager?
The city performs trunk line maintenance activities on M-19 within the City of Richmond. These activities include snow removal, sign replacement, service repairs, street sweeping and lawn cutting on our properties. The M.D.A. reimburses the city for a hundred percent of the costs associated with the work based on the M.D.A. equipment rate schedule and benefit costs. And this is an annual agreement that we approve every year.
Point of clarification, Mr. City Manager? The proposed resolution reads my name rather than Jim's name? You're requesting?
Yeah, I think that's the-
Jim being authorized?
Yes.
Yes.
Actually, what happens is, Jim, I think the next item, which is the roadway asset management plan, needs to be... Which one has to be signed electronically, Jim?
This one.
Oh, this one? Okay, so the mo, the resolution needs to be changed.
Staff recommendation is that Jim?
Yeah, I apologize. What it is, is M.D.A. requires that it be signed electronically. Both Jim and I have gone through the computer program to have, they're, they can accept our.
So this resolution needs to be changed?
We will have to change the resolution, sorry. We changed the motion.
Not a problem, not a problem.
Where would the resolution be changed at? Where, where would it?
Down here, they want the mayor to sign it.
That'll just be changed to Jim's signature there.
The motion is going to be-
No, I understand that. Wouldn't it still be you, though, that signs the resolution? No.
Because they can't accept a written signature, they have to accept a-
Oh, actually, uh, Councilor Green is correct that sign the resolution can be signed, should be signed by the mayor and the clerk, but to sign the, that's, that's preparing, that's authorizing myself to sign the contract.
It, it, it does say that we, Jim Getzinger, Public Service Director, is designated as the authorized.
Two completely separate things then, Jim.
Sorry, for the, yeah, that is very confusing, I apologize.
Okay. Okay. All right. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to designate the Public Service Director as the individual authorized to sign the contract between M.D.A. and the City of Richmond. Support.
Most of them made and supported. Any further discussion? Any audience participation? Back to the table? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number nine is consideration of roadway asset management plan. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider adopting a roadway asset management plan for all streets under the jurisdiction of the city. The city adopted the current- Uh, the city adopted the current plan back in 2017. Uh, by adopting this plan, uh, it frees us up to transfer as many funds as we want between major and local streets, uh, so that's a benefit to the city, uh, by having this plan, and periodically we're required to update it. So, uh, every three years, we plan on bringing this back, getting it updated, uh, updated and approved by council, and that will continue to allow us to switch more money if we deem necessary from major to local streets.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to adopt the city of Richmond roadway asset management plan as presented and to authorize the plan to be submitted to MDOT for approval.
Support.
Most been made and supported. Any discussion?
Just thank, thank you to the Public Service Director for a great read, and, uh, it was very accurate.
Can we amend this at any time? We, we amended our program here in the last few years. Took one street off, put another street on that was, we found out was worse than another street. This plan says that we are going to do these streets 2021 and 22. We can amend it?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, that's all I'm concerned with. Any other discussion? Any public participation on this one? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number 10 is consideration of chapel exterior improvements. Mr. City Manager?
The current budget includes $8,000 for exterior maintenance improvements to the cemetery chapel. Uh, the chapel was built in the 1980s and has had no significant updates since that time. Uh, we've been talking about this for a couple of years. Uh, Jim has put together a plan for both, uh, doing improvements to the outside of the chapel, uh, and at a later date bringing back some improvements, uh, to this board for, uh, interior, uh, improvements. But, uh, before you tonight is kind of redoing the vinyl siding, uh, and new gutters and shutters. Uh, the low, uh, quote that we received was from ABG North.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Make motion to authorize the expense of $6,608 for siding and gutter replacement at the cemetery chapel to ABG North with the expense charged to the cemetery fund.
Support.
Most been made and supported. Discussion?
It's definitely been a long time coming.
For me?
It's been a long time coming.
Yes, it has.
Well, and it's, I just, it's not an easy business as a city to be in the cemetery, but since it is our responsibility, we need to take care of it and keep it up.
Do we, uh, I see this company is from Armada, but I've never heard of them before. Just because you live in Armada, that's not what I'm trying to say. I'm not going there, Jim. Not tonight yet. We have, we know them. They've done work.
They have not done work in Richmond, but certainly their references checked out.
Okay, alright, very good. The other thing is, John, um, it doesn't include the 1456-89 for windows and the roof, and it also, I believe, the way I read it, it's not in, we didn't, uh, budget that.
Correct. I believe those are being done by the DBW internally.
And it's gonna be within an internal account.
Yep.
But they're gonna be done at the same time that you're doing all this work.
Correct, it's according, there was, uh, $8,000 budgeted for this whole scope of the project, and the total is a couple hundred dollars over the 8,000, but I believe the, the money we had budgeted for the internal improvement should cover that variance there.
Okay. Any, any other comments, discussion? Public comments? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number 11 is consideration of West Richmond subdivision lighting. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider approving a contract with DT, DTE to install six streetlights in the West Richmond subdivision. The streetlights are a requirement to the subdivision plans approved by the city council and planning commission. Uh, I've gone over the, uh, contract amount with the developer, Teltor Contracting. They will be paying the upfront cost of the $13,915.50 for the installation of the streetlights. After that, they'll be part of our, uh, community street lighting, uh, department.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the DTE contract to install six streetlights in the West Richmond subdivision with installation cost of $13,915.50 to be paid by Teltor Contracting, authorize the city manager to sign the contract.
Support.
Most been made and supported. Is there any discussion? There's been quite a bit of discussion on this already, uh, planning commission to make sure there were, uh, enough lighting.
Yeah, I think we added six from the original proposal of five, yep.
Any audience comments on this item? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number 12 is consideration of resignations from the BZA Personnel Board and the EDC. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider accept, accepting the resignation of Danielle Lee from the EDC and Gerard, Gerard Manfet from the BZA and Personnel Board.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to accept the resignation of Danielle Lee from the EDC and Gerard Manafet from the Personnel Board and BZA.
Support.
Most been made and supported. Discussion? Sorry to see those people go. Um, it looks as though Gerard is, uh, retiring, uh, and moving, and Danielle will be moving also out of our community. Hate to see both of them go. Gerard, uh, has been on many, many, many years.
Not sure.
Uh, we really appreciate all the years that he put on, both the, uh, the Personnel Board and, and especially BZA. He had been on BZA for many, many years. Any other comments? Any audience comments? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number 13, consideration of establishing a quarterly roundtable, table meeting date. Mr. City Manager?
Council is being asked to schedule its next quarterly roundtable meeting. Uh, roundtable meetings are normally scheduled the months of January, April, July, and October. Uh, most recently, we've often placed them on, uh, the same night as a regular council meeting, sometimes meeting before the council meeting and then taking a break and then going back into the quarterly. Uh, the two regular meeting dates in October are the 7th and the 21st.
Thank you, sir. If, uh, council would, uh, again, drop the rules that we have set for ourselves and, uh, talk about date and time, is that okay, council?
Yep.
Okay. Um, we wanna note, John, is it the 10th through the 15th or 16th?
Fifteenth.
Yeah, John's gonna be gone the 10th through the, uh, 15th of October. So, with that in mind, I guess I would ask the city manager if you would want to do this before you go on vacation or look forward to it?
I, I think right, right now, and I checked with the clerk before looking at, uh, she keeps track, like, during the budget and, and other meetings of what we have on the budget workshop, I think right now we have goals and objectives and the food truck, uh, are on there. So I think either date would, uh, work if we add, then we can always change, but, uh, I think either date would work with those two items. I think I can get both of those on.
Okay. So the 7th would be three weeks from tonight, or of course, uh, five weeks for the 21st.
I like the 7th.
Uh, can we do the 7th?
What am I, pardon me?
7th, please.
7th?
October 7th, 6 o'clock.
Looking good?
That's fine, yep.
Okay. Let's have a motion.
I make a motion to schedule the special quarterly roundtable meeting of the city council for October 7th at 6:00 PM.
Support.
At City Hall.
Support.
Okay, October 7th at 6:00 PM is the motion. Any other discussion? Any audience comments? Eyes open to the public. It's all great here at City Hall. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number 14, consideration of adopting the 2020 council meeting dates. Mr. City Manager?
In order to comply with the requirements of the Open Meetings Act, council must establish the schedule of council meetings for the upcoming year. Uh, it also helps us as we put out the city calendar that's available for all residents. Again, this year, the, uh, proposed list that is before council has the July and August meetings being held at 6:00 PM. Uh, the meeting, first meeting in September, uh, will be, uh, on Tuesday due to the Labor Day holiday. Uh, you'll notice that I did not, uh, put in the, uh, calendar here that we'll be meeting at the schoolhouse. I think, uh, we had a lot of discussion this year on that, and I think due to the weather and the heat sometimes in that building, uh, it's just a little more comfortable for us to meet here.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to adopt the 2020 city council meeting schedule as presented. Further, the start time for the meetings in July and August will be 6:00 PM.
Support.
Most been made and supported. Is there any discussion? Any audience comments? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Let me move on to miscellaneous matters from the city managers, sir.
Uh, nothing tonight.
Okay. Council comments, Rob?
Uh, just reminder, September 28th, Saturday, uh, be a fundraiser at War, War Water Brewery in, um, St. Clair to, uh, benefit Denise Grant, who's a wife of past fire chief Tom Grant's wife, who's, uh, just finished up her first stage of chemo, uh, white belly and brain cancer, so anybody available, uh, come out to help a great family for a great cause.
Thank you, Rob. John?
Nothing.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Jamie?
Um, do you have homecoming on your...
No, that's, that's also...
Yep, so homecoming is the 27th, and then also on the 28th, Taffel will be hosting all of Taffel here in town.
That's the big one, right?
Yep, that's the big one.
Tournament?
Well, it's the regular, it's just, it's home, everybody's here.
So everybody comes, that's what happens. Okay. Okay. Dennis?
Oh, good.
Michael?
Yes, I'd like to thank the administration for the agenda today. I mean, we had 14 items, it's been a while. A lot of them had a lot of detail, so thank you for getting that to us so we can make an informed decision. And thanks for the public for coming out to talk about a couple items that were on the agenda. And then as usual, now that we've, uh, lost a couple board members, encourage somebody if they're interested in getting involved in their local government to come out, fill an application for one of the boards.
Very good. Again, uh, festival, uh, was very successful, uh, due to so many volunteers and sponsors, uh, from the community, and also, John, again, to your administration and your departments, fantastic. They all worked with us.
Thank you.
We had a huge crowd on Saturday. It was a record-breaker for us, um, in the carnival. It was a record-breaker. They didn't, we had never done so well, um, at the carnival, and also the demolition derby, uh, the gate at the demolition derby on Saturday was a record-breaker. So were our costs. Our costs were up quite a bit, but, um, it was, it was very successful, and I think, uh, many of the organizations that are involved did very well. And hats off to Richmond Lennox EMS, uh, the smart, uh, side of Jeff White. Um, he moved 1,200 people, especially, I think there was, can't remember the number, but almost 800 people just on Saturday...
Yep.
Afternoon alone for the demolition derby from the high school, and thank you to the high school for allowing us to utilize that. Um, but, uh, Jeff's people moved a lot of people, uh, all weekend long, but especially on Saturday afternoon, which was great, great to have that. And, uh, you know, again, you know, thank God, we didn't have any major problems with that many people in town. I, I talked to the police, they said they had almost, it was almost more quiet than a normal weekend for them, um, as far as, uh, things going wrong. I think it's probably because we have so many police, uh, and so many other towns that the chief has worked with to bring other police departments in to, uh, help out, and, uh, it was great. But, again, uh, we hope the 57th year will be, uh, as good as this year. We'll go to the calendar, today being the 16th, the Lake-to-Lake Bicycle Trip. I'm not sure what else to call that. Um, but it is the inaugural ride from Lake Michigan to Lake Huron, and they're gonna be coming down the trail, uh, right down through Richmond. And then, um, uh, where we will host them at, uh, BB Park?
Yes, at the pavilion.
Between 10 and 12-ish?
They were saying between 10 and 12, they anticipate they'll get to Richmond on Wednesday, the 18th, yes.
Roughly 50...
50 riders and about like 10 to 15 volunteers that I think are with some trail vehicles and everything, yeah. They're riding from, I believe, South Haven to Port Huron. Um, even though the trail is certainly just in planning stages in some areas, I think this is a group of kind of experienced riders that don't mind riding on roads, um, at this point. But they're doing this to kind of raise awareness of this great Lake-to-Lake Trail, uh, with the idea that we're all working together to get this trail a reality.
Yeah. So it's a great opportunity for us to show off the town a little bit, so anybody that'd like to stop over there and help, uh, would be appreciated. Uh, then we have the EDC will be meeting at 7 o'clock on the 19th, right here at City Hall. The Tifa will be meeting here at City Hall on the 25th at 7 o'clock. As, uh, mentioned, homecoming for Richmond is early this year, in September, the 27th, and we will be having the Main Street Parade. And then on the 28th, we've got a few things there, as Rob brought up, uh, the fundraiser for Denise Grant, also Taffel, uh, will be here, which is numerous teams, it just, they'll fill the entire school, uh, grounds up. And also, we have, I believe this is the, yeah, the Jigsaw Puzzle Sale, uh, by the Lois Wagner Memorial Library. Uh, of course, the friends of the library are gonna be putting that on, on Saturday, September 28th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And it says, "Don't miss out, we have puzzles for all ages." And also puzzle donations are also accepted at the library during open hours of operation. Also, they have, uh, a fall book folding workshop on October 3rd. Uh, it's a free workshop. It is for 14 and up, and that is going to be October 3rd, Thursday, at 6:00 PM at the library meeting room. I'm not sure what this is. You will get step-by-step instructions for creating one of several seasonal designs. All supplies are provided, but pre-registration is required. Calling the library at 727-2665 to get more information. Uh, we have, uh, so on the 29th, Sunday, we have the CARE Ride for Recovery. That will be in the municipal parking lot, starting at 8:30, roughly running through to 3:30. Um, I don't have any other information on that. Is that, it starts at the, uh...
Yes, it starts and ends at the municipal parking lot, uh, so CARE of Southeastern Michigan, which is an organization that provides services, uh, particularly those for, uh, kind of addiction-related services, uh, this is their big fundraiser for the year. Uh, there's different lengths of rides, and I think it's CARE.org possibly, uh...
I don't have anything...
Yeah, sorry about that, I'll, I'll...
Written in the calendar here.
But, uh, uh, it's on their Facebook page, CARE of Southeastern Michigan, uh, to get more information.
Good, great. And then, uh, the next regular scheduled city council meeting will be on October 7th, right here at City Hall at 7 o'clock. Is there anything else that we need to add to the calendar? Being that, we'll move on. There is no closed, uh, session. Is there any other business of the city council this evening? Being that a motion to adjourn would be in order.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. There's no discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Thanks for being with us tonight.